Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The meeting is September 24th, 2015. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand for a moment of silent prayer. May be seated. At this time, I'm going to turn the program over to Dr. Bracy. Dr. Bracy?
Good evening to everyone. I know it's been awhile since we've been in here. We'll try that again. Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to our board meeting tonight. Glad to have you all with us this evening. And we will get started with, well, first of all, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by Patrick W. McGee, a 12th grader at Woodrow Wilson High School. Woodrow Wilson High School is here with us tonight presenting the pledge as well as the statement to Lisa C. Rocket, who's also a senior from Wilson, will be part of the presentation. So at this time, will we have both students come forward. Mr. Johnson, yes, will you please come as well?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you two students from Woodrow Wilson High School. First, with the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Patrick William McGee. Patrick is a senior at Woodrow Wilson. He has a 3.5 grade point average, is a member of the Woodrow Wilson High School AJ ROTC and his honors unit where he serves with distinction. He is a member of the Woodrow Wilson Drill, AJ ROTC Drill Team, and he is desirous of attending Virginia Military Institute, Old Dominion University, or West Point. He plans to enlist in the United States Army Combat Unit and serve as an engineer. He speaks conversational French and Spanish. He's a member of the varsity tennis team and is the recipient of various honors and awards. And followed by Patrick, this evening, we'll have Talissa Rocket. Talissa is a senior at Woodrow Wilson High School where she has maintained a 4.1 grade point average. She will be attending the first college program during the spring semester and has been active in various extracurricular activities. The National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, the Future Business Leaders of America, the Student Council Association, and the Special Forces Marching Band. She is president of the Future Business Leaders of Americas Club, is president of the Latin Club, is vice president of the National Honor Society, and she plans to seek the position of senior class vice president. She is desirous of being awarded a scholarship so that she can attend a four-year institution and major in political science and minor in business management. She plans to attend Yale University Law School where she wants to study corporate law. She's here tonight with her mother, Mrs. Terry A. Rocket, Mrs. Rocket, and her aunt, Mrs. Angela M. Rocket. The students of Woodrow Wilson High School.
Good evening. Will you, may you please stand for the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. You may now be seated.
Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, school board members, Dr. Bracy, and special guests, good evening.
Good evening.
When I entered the doors of Woodrow Wilson High School as a freshman, my dream was to achieve several milestones. The high school milestones include achievement in the areas of academics and social skills, both of which eventually led me to pursue extracurricular activities. Setting my mind on those first two goals as a freshman in 2012 gave me the confidence I needed to pursue extracurricular activities. My experience at Woodrow Wilson High School has been exciting and memorable. Primarily, my educational experience at Wilson has prepared me for college. As a student at Wilson, the administration and the teachers have all contributed to my development and my educational experience. I have acquired time management skills, study skills, and social skills. These skills have helped prepare me for first college as well as for life. Woodrow Wilson High School has received many various honors and awards. First, in 2012, Wilson received the U.S. News and World Report for the Bronze Award, recognizing the best high schools in America. Second, we have about 1,440 students enrolled in our school, and we also have received state accreditation as well as sex accreditation. Third, Mr. Paul Wilson, Jr., a biology teacher, have received the citywide high school Teacher of the Year and the citywide Teacher of the Year Awards. Fourth, on September 11th, Cynthia Brown, a senior, set a high school Virginia league record for being the first female to throw a touchdown pass in a varsity football game. Wilson offers several enrichment programs designed for students, achievement in the specialty programs such as the Center of Excellence Programs, which includes special emphasis on the social studies and the foreign language, virtual Virginia online classes such as AP Arabic, AP Spanish, Psychology, Microeconomics, and Human Geography. We have the following National Honor Societies, Mathematics, Social Studies, and Foreign Languages. The following AC-13 classes are on our campus, Culinary Arts, Nursing, and Early Childhood. This year, Wilson will have 74 seniors attending first college. In August, the Freshman Institute is held for one week for all of the freshmen attending our school. Also, we operate the President's Branch of the Northern Star Credit Union, which is a student-run credit union on our campus. Woodrow Wilson has an active PTSA. Additionally, our school partners and volunteers include a Japanese ambassador, Ms. Diane Brain, the Bamboozers Club, the Northern Star Credit Union, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's Restaurant, and the UP Center that sponsors a Wednesday Night Family Program. Finally, Wilson is actively engaged in the community by participating in several band, choral, AJ ROTC, and art activities. The band participates in various parades, the Fish Bowl, Norfolk State Homecoming, Hampton University Homecoming, Elizabeth City State University Homecoming, and the Suffolk Peanut Festival, the Norfolk Holiday Parade, and the Back to School Community Celebrations. This year, the band has been invited to participate in the 2016 Gator Bowl in Jacksonville, Florida. The chorus participates in Old Town Music Festivals, Community Little League Opening Ceremonies, and Memorial Day festivities, and the Old Town Ghost Wall. The AJ ROTC participates in local parades, Portsmouth City Events, and Portsmouth School Events. The Art Department participates in the Downtown Holiday Art Show. We are proud of our school and appreciate your work on the Portsmouth City School Board. Thank you for supporting the Woodrow Wilson students as we gain knowledge and learn to become productive citizens.
Good, and Patrick? Hold on just a minute. Mr. Parent has a token for you.
On behalf of the school board, it's my pleasure and honor to present to you this the token of our appreciation for outstanding work. Talissa, I know that you're going to be an awesome corporate lawyer, and congratulations and best wishes in your career. And Patrick, I'm sure that you're going to be, you're going to reach the highest in your military career, and we're very pleased to have you, and we're going to miss you as seniors, but we look forward to hearing great things from you. And Tim, I know that you're proud of these students and you're proud of your school, and you have every reason to be. So congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have to make one change. I'm going to have to ask Mr. Lamb to move back into his seat because if he votes, it's going to come up Mr. Nance. So, Mr. Lamb, we tried to bring you in closer, but we can't because of electronic things, you know, technology, you know how that is.
And I do apologize about this, everyone.
You were asked, no, you were asked to come down, and that was good until the clerk reminded us that we had to follow procedures because of the board, and we hadn't thought about that, that everything was going to show up in Mr. Nance's name. I don't think you want to do that. Okay, that's our fault. Okay, next would be the school board mission statement. Mr. Parent, would you do the school board mission statement, sir?
Well, we've seen two examples of our mission. The mission, of course, in public schools is to challenge. As I said, we've seen two great examples of students that accomplished, have accomplished the mission of Portsmouth Schools, and that it being the mission of our school system is to challenge the minds, challenge the bodies, and challenge the dreams of all students while focusing on excellence.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parent. Call the board's attention to electronic roll. Please indicate your presence through electronic voting. Madam Clerk?
Six members present, three members absent.
Okay, thank you. Call your attention to item number 2.7, electronic vote for approval of the agenda. Board's pleasure.
Second.
Move to proper secondary approval of agenda is given in the discussion, any changes. If not, please indicate your approval through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, first item is 3.1 presentation, Portsmouth Council PTAs. Ms. Donna Clifton, President. Dr. Bracy, do you have anything to add?
No, sir. Ms. Clifton will come forward at this time along with her executive board. And as they're coming, I had the pleasure to meet with them earlier in the week to hear some of the wonderful goals that they have planned for this year. So, Ms. Clifton?
Thank you to Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, Dr. Bracy, to the entire school board and all of those who are present here tonight. I am so honored to be representing the New Portsmouth Council of PTAs. My purpose here tonight is to simply introduce you to the entire executive board and provide you with a brief overview of the direction that our ship is going to be sailing. I am Ms. Donna Clifton, the President. Standing with me is Ms. Latisha Thornton, the First Vice President. In her absence, Ms. Katrina Freeman is our Second Vice President. We have Mrs. Stephanie Jones as our Treasurer. Mrs. Sandy Recadall is our Recording Secretary, and Mrs. Deja Williams is our corresponding Secretary. We also have, I believe, one of our local unit PTA presidents from Wilson here with us on tonight as well. You have before you have been provided a document that outlines the PTA goals and missions as well as council's goals and missions, and because time won't permit me to cover that document in detail, I just hope that you will view it in your leisure. We are, however, extremely excited about our new venture in ensuring that our local unit PTAs and PTSAs are in good standing with the Virginia PTA, thereby being a positive reflection on our city regarding the organization. We have already begun training our units in preparation for success by hosting a bylaws workshop, assisting with completing audits, and scheduling a leadership training institute in October. We have currently visited, held elections, and installed new PTA officers for several of our schools, and it is our hope that we will be fully functioning with all of our schools 100% in good standing by November the 30th. As the newly-elected president, I was so very proud to attend the PTA Annual Conference in Richmond, Virginia this summer. And upon introducing myself, I received the Portsmouth Membership Report for the 2014-2015 school year. With over 13,000-plus students, I was simply amazed that there were only 1,833 total PTA memberships for the entire city of Portsmouth for this past school year. Now, this number, I'm sure, is not a true reflection of how the parents and the citizens of Portsmouth feel about providing support to our students, but it does speak volumes, and it should compel each and every one of us to care for and maintain the future in educating our children. In an effort to increase membership and partner with the superintendent's goal of having more parent involvement, the Portsmouth Council of PTA along with each of our local units have submitted a challenge to the city. We're challenging every citizen in this city to connect with one of our 19 schools by joining the PTA. We began in August of this year making our presence known by holding membership drives at the Farmers Market downtown Portsmouth, the Community Wise Event at Intello's Pavilion, Afro Dog's Motorcycle Club's Back to School Giveaway Event, and we also had a table at Portsmouth Public Schools Wellness Back to School Event to encourage all of our Portsmouth employees to get on board. With this initiative, we received over 100 new memberships, and we're not stopping now. If we had every citizen, every city official, every school board member, every local church, every local business, every person connected to Portsmouth to join into our citywide PTA efforts, what an awesome impact we could have on bettering the partnerships between schools, families, and communities for every child, One Voice. My motto is, we are one PTA. We just happen to be housed at 19 different schools. But we are committed to uniting together as we move full steam ahead, overcoming all of these obstacles from the past, riding the waves as we set our goals toward excellence, and sailing smoothly through the 2015-2016 school year. We'd like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak with you tonight and to just let you know that we are here, we are visible, we are moving forward, we're going to make a difference, we are shifting the atmosphere, and we are about the business of change in PTA. Please know that we are 100% committed to every child, One Voice. And because we are here to serve you, the school board, are there any questions, concerns, or comments that you have for us as a new council?
Thank you, Ms. Clifton. Mr. Parent?
Ms. Clifton, thank you, and thank you for the board for coming tonight. It's always good to see a strong PTA board because you're exactly right. Having been a former administrator in the school, PTA is really the key of working with parents and getting parents to come and just helping the school. And I am so glad that, I sense and I feel your enthusiasm, that you really want to move forward, and we will do everything we can as a board to help you. I guess my question, one of my questions, and maybe I can get with you afterwards, if a board member wants to join all of the PTAs, is there a way that you can write one check and send it to the?
Yes, you can write it to the council, Portsmouth Council of PTAs, and then we will disburse to the individual schools.
So, but each school has a different amount of money, so I would have to?
Just get with me, and I can let you know each local unit's dues. That would be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clifton.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamb?
Sorry about that. Conglareded for having to move back down, I guess. Just real quick, I mean, job well done. You guys have been phenomenal. Just one question as well. What if a business or an organization wanted to join, say, the PTA or a school PTA? Is that the same fee setup, or have you looked that far?
That's something that we're researching with the state to see if there's something different with the business. According to the bylaws, a membership is one vote. So whatever that one membership is, it'll just be one vote. If the business wanted to, say, have all of their employees to become PTA members, that would be totally awesome.
Right.
Then they would pay the individual membership. But as far as, is there a way for them to just pay one lump sum, not individually with the schools at this time?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that's all of the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 3.2 for presentation, United Way of Southampton Road. Ms. Carol McCormick, Dr. Bracy?
Yes, please come forward, Ms. McCormick.
Thank you. Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I am here just to simply say a very humble and very grateful thank you on behalf of the community to the employees of Portsmouth Schools. Last year, the employees raised almost $36,000 for United Way, and those dollars were spent right here in Portsmouth to help your most vulnerable citizens. But it doesn't stop there. This says something, I think, very special about your teachers because the students of Portsmouth raised almost $9,000 last year, and I think that deserves a round of applause for both of them. Your presentation this earlier with the high school students, I think, shows you just the type of students you're raising, the fact that they are great citizens, and that they care a lot about the people around them. So again, just thank you on behalf of a grateful community, and I'll give this to the clerk.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item for electronic vote, minutes of August 20, 2015. Board's pleasure. Did you, remember, you second? Okay, I heard, I heard something, but I wasn't sure. Okay, it's been moved to proper second that we adopt the minutes presented. Any questions, any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Public comment, non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes. The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Ms. Nicole Ambrose?
Good evening, Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, ladies and gentlemen of the Portsmouth City School Board, Dr. Bracy, and all assembled here this evening. My name is Nicole Ambrose, and I teach U.S. History and Government at Churchland High School. The topic of my statement this evening is on the separation between church and state as is defined in the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, Article 1, Section 16 of Virginia's Constitution, in U.S. Supreme Court cases such as Engel versus Vitale. In addition, I'd like to address my belief that the school board neglected to uphold this key principle in its citywide convocation held on August 28th, 2015 for all essential personnel and staff. In 1789, the first-ever U.S. Congress adopted the first 10 amendments to the United States Constitution, creating a Bill of Rights that guarantees civil liberties and due process to American citizens. Amendment 1 protects five key freedoms for Americans: religion, speech, petition, assembly, and press. The first of these freedoms written is, in fact, religion. It states, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." See, our founding fathers' experiences and history with a government that supported a specific religion and church was such a point of contention that they chose to put this freedom first before all other civil liberties. We know that James Madison and the First Congress did not invent the idea of separation of church and state. Leaders before and during their time also contributed in the development of this principle, including Thomas Jefferson, who wrote the Virginia Statute for Religious Freedom. This statute was passed and adopted as law by the Virginia General Assembly in 1786, and it states, "That no man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship, place, or ministry whatsoever, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinion in matters of religion." The Constitution of the state of Virginia adopted this as Article 1, Section 16, with the addition of, "But it shall be left free to every person to select his religious instructor and to make for his support such private contract as he shall please." Jefferson believed that in a democracy, religion has its place, government has its place, and that the two should be divided by a wall of separation. In fact, not only is this American history, but it is the SOL strand V U S V E. I am required to teach this to our students. The Virginia Standards of Learning Assessment may test them on this, and my evaluations are in part based on the proficiency by which my students demonstrate knowledge such as this. Shouldn't we all understand these key principles? It is my belief that when the school board holds a convocation for all staff of Portsmouth Public Schools and makes mandatory that all said persons attend, that this convocation should and must be secular by its very nature. A government-sponsored event in which prayers, invocations, and benedictions are being led in the name of Jesus Christ is an event that violates the principle of separation of church and state as protected through our national and state constitutions. Ladies and gentlemen, it is the right of every American to choose their own religion, but furthermore, it is the right of Americans and Virginians specifically to be free from a government which endorses a specific religion. The school board is a special district. It is a local level of elected officials. They are a government, and this is public school. It is not grounds for a religious agenda. It is logical to accept that often constitutional interpretations may differ from person to person and from age to age. As these founding documents were written centuries ago, we understand that times and social norms change. It is then the responsibility of the U.S. Supreme Court to interpret and apply these principles for us today.
Ms. Ambrose, would you wrap it up? You're running out of time.
Yes, sir. I have two more comments I'd like to make. Thank you. In 1962, the state of New York passed a law requiring public schools to begin each day with a state-authorized prayer that was drafted by the State Board of Regents. The parents of 10 pupils challenged the law before the U.S. Supreme Court in the case of Ingalls versus Vitale, which declared the law unconstitutional and in violation of the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. The majority opinion in this case stated, "The constitutional prohibition against laws respecting an establishment of religion must at least mean that in this country it is no part of the business of government to compose official prayers for any group of the American people to recite as part of a religious program carried on by government." And this is my last statement. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you understand that this is not an attack on religion. I am simply arguing that a government should take no part in the establishment of one. We don't pray or bow our heads to a specific deity during the moment of silence in the morning. We don't persuade our students toward one religion over another or display religious symbols.
Ms. Ambrose, I've given you extended time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 26 says, "The core unit which determines the strength of any society is the family. Therefore, the government should foster and protect its integrity." The public school division is a government, and the school division should foster...
Ms. Si, are you speaking to the speaker? I'm getting a knock from back here, which means he's not reading you. He's not hearing you.
Sir?
Your speaker.
Your, your mic. Put it, he's not, he's not hearing you back there. Go ahead.
All right.
Okay, that's...
Can I, am I starting over or what?
Go ahead, start over. Start over.
Start over. I'm Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 26, "The core unit which determines the strength of any society is the family. Therefore, the government should foster and protect its integrity. The public school division is a government, and the school division should foster and protect the integrity of the family." How does the Portsmouth School Division implement, implement the standards of research to foster and protect the family? Students will need more than just good teachers and smaller class sizes to meet the challenges of today. For students to get the most out of school, we need to promote a partnership between parents, community leaders, and teachers. Only through partnerships can our schools keep improving and stay on the right track. How is Portsmouth School Division promoting partnership between parents, community leaders, and teachers? The record shows that family involvement leads to students' higher achievements, better attitudes towards school, lower dropout rates, and increased community support for education. When families are involved in learning, students achieve more regardless of socioeconomic sta- status, ethnic background, or parent's educational level. Why does Portsmouth Schools fa- fail to actively engage a high number of parents, other family members, and community citizens in the children's education? Could trust be a reason? Could culture be a reason? What is trust and what is culture? Trust is an individual or group's willingness to be vulnerable to another party based on the competence that the latter party is benevolent, reliable, competent, honest, and open. Culture is a way of life, especially as it relates to the socially transmitted habits, customs, traditions, and beliefs that characterize a particular group of people at a particular time. It includes the behaviors, actions, practices, attitudes, norms, and values, communication style, etiquette, spirituality, concepts of health and healing, superstitions, and institutions of an ethic, ethnic, religious, or social group. It is the lens through which we look at the world. How many of us have trust issues? How many of us relate to the American culture? What lens does Portsmouth look through to identify our culture? There are two orientations of developmental scripts for children and for schooling. There are individualism and collectivism. Conflicts between these two thoughts are reflected daily in our cities' classrooms. Awareness of our individualism and collectivism-shaped goals and behaviors will enable teachers and parents to interpret each other's expectations better and work together more harmoniously on behalf of students. One theme that crosses all cultural family ties is discipline. "The core unit which determines the strength of any society is the family. Therefore, the government should foster and protect its integrity." How can our schools do it? By teaching skills of self-governance. We, the people, want the school board to create a policy that teaches self-governance skills to students. Here are the petitions directing the school board to implement the Safer, Saner Schools' Whole School Change Program through restorative practices. It teaches students how to repair the harm and restore relationships. Portsmouth has a crisis going on in our city right now. The extraordinary amount of discipline issues reported to the Board of Education, from the number of births occurring without marriage and lack of discipline carried out in the home. As a result, the school board deliberates in closed sessions. Discipline issues needs to be resolved at the time and place where it occurs, in the classroom. We, the people, want justice for all. We want a policy to implement the Whole School Change Program in the Portsmouth School Division. All board members and all principals of the school division have received a copy of the booklet. In addition, the school board has received a copy of Defined and Restorative. We, the people, are giving our consent to implement the Safer, Saner Schools' Whole School Change Program in the Portsmouth Public School Division. Thanks for listening.
Okay, seeing no requests to speak. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Members of the school board and Dr. Bracy, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak this evening. Since my first presentation to the board last spring, I've been doing some reading on American education and want to take this time to share a few thoughts with you. First, I read Mr. Nance's suggested readings, same kind of different as me, in Educating Students in Poverty. Both were explorations of redemption against the odds and the importance of overcoming stereotypes to forge interpersonal connections. Then I read Diane Ravitch's, The Death and Life of the Great American School System: How Testing and Choice Are Undermining Education. The title describes her position. Next came Peg Tyre's, The Good School: A How-To Guide for Parents Seeking to Identify the Best Educational Opportunities for Their Children. I listened to Tracy Kidder's Among Schoolchildren, which details a life, a year in the life of a fifth-grade teacher in Holyoke, Massachusetts, way back in 1995, when those child left behind was not even on the horizon. Holyoke was and still is a small mill town that's seen better days. She struggles to encourage a class of mostly poor racially mixed children to value an education in an environment which is rarely supportive. Then I listened to Ron Paul's, The School Revolution, which endorses abandonment of public schools and replacing them with internet-based homeschooling. Regardless of what you think of as politics, his perspective is challenging to the conventional wisdom. Finally, I read David Labrie's, Someone Has to Fail: The Zero-Sum Game of Public Schooling, which describes the development and evolution of the public school system we have today. I found this book disturbing, and we'll go back to it shortly. Having done all that reading, my mind was swirling. There was virtually no consensus on how education should be structured or implemented. What's more effective? Phonics, whole words, blended reading? Should math be taught through drills from day one? Or should it be a byproduct of childish explorations? What's the optimum class size? Should curriculum be based on defined tracks? Should we allow choice, vouchers, or charter schools as alternatives to geographic enrollment? How do we measure success and accountability? I guess these are the questions that keep the board and Dr. Bracy awake at night, looking for new solutions to old questions. Labrie's book traces the history of the many facets of the debates. His position is that public schools were established in the 1830s not to promote literacy but to reduce the social tensions of a developing class system by promoting equal educational opportunities for all in a shared culture of civic responsibility. He calls this democratic equality. As the Industrial Revolution took hold, the goal changed to producing effective workers. He calls this the social efficiency approach. Finally, the goal changed one more time to social mobility, which speaks to the goal of improving or reinforcing social position. All three threads continue to collide today. He comes to the disturbing conclusion about the likelihood of reforming public education in any large manner. Not only are there barriers to change at the federal, state, local, school, teacher, and student levels, but more importantly, those at the top of the pyramid want to stay there. This results in a gradual expansion from elementary to high school to college to post-college degrees as a terminal state for education. Private schools and SAT coaches are part of the system for those who can afford it. Those who start the race late can never catch up as the mark of success is constantly moved upward. I'd be interested in the views of Dr. Whitaker, as a trained sociologist, on Labrie's thesis and where she sees an exit to the trap that seems to ensnare so many Portsmouth students. Next month, I plan to speak on my brief career as a high school tutor, the reason I came to make these presentations in the first place. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any requests to speak. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come to speak on behalf of the children. My name is Robert Falk. I live at 215 Depot Drive. That's in Seaboard Square, across the street from Kroger's on Frederick Boulevard. I noticed that the children have to be at the bus stop in the dark, pretty much, around 6:40, 6:45 in the morning. And it's fall now, and it's gonna be cold, maybe raining. So I'm here to ask if the school board would consider finding some funds to build some shelters. They are predicting and promising that it's gonna be what's called an air-nino winter. That means it's gonna be colder in the south. And so the children, it's gonna need some shelter. Mr. Parent spoke on excellence for the children. But if you wake up out your bed, go to this bus stop in the morning and it's cold, or if you're wet and you're supposed to dress for the weather, but you really don't have the proper clothing or the umbrellas, you can't go to school in expect to strive for excellence. So if we can find some way to build some shelters, some bus stops that they can go to when it's dark or wet or whatever. If you can't find the funds, could we consider building some tents in the neighborhoods or put some school buses out there early enough in the neighborhoods? If it's not enough school buses out there, buy some city buses, but just something for the children. It's just sad to keep sending them out there in the dark and inclement weather and then ask them to go to school, do well, early in the morning. It's just not fair to the children. So, you know, something can be done. And a lot of adults get to school, they get in their cars, they drive to school. A lot of adults get up in the morning, they might be rushing to work, and you're not really looking for high school students going to a bus stop. But when they get to the bus stop, even if they have a good coat or umbrella, they still have to go just on the sidewalk or what have you. And they still gonna get wet, they still gonna be cold, they still in the dark, the high school students. So something can be built, something can be erected. So just, I'm just pretty much asking that, you know, all neighborhoods is, is, is not a neighborhood where you can go and just stand on people's porch early in the morning. You know, some people, a lot of older people, they're gonna wake up, who on my porch? High school students, and people scared of high school students. 6:50 in the morning, I'll be upset. I'll get them off my porch. So the school board, like the PTA lady spoke, they may have the funds to help build something. But if you can't build something, at least park some buses out there early in the morning. Maybe get the tenant councils to get involved. But something, something for the children. They deserve it. If you want excellence from them, it's like asking them to run a race but not give them any food for energy to get started. I think you guys have the power to get something, and it's not getting any better out there. So, you know, just something, something. And the sooner you start, the better. But I feel just park some buses for the neighborhoods that you might feel like it's, it's crime written and you're afraid that some children might take the buses, go on a joyride, or vandalize them, or whatever. You can have more police patrols, patrols, or you can park them closer to the rent offices where they have cameras right in the near vicinity. But it's not fair to ask the children to just get up out your warm bed, go outside, do the best you can until a school bus come get you and bus you to school that early in the morning. I, I really don't think children should be bused to school that early in the morning while parents are going to work. I'll set it back an hour or two because children need to get more sleep than adults do. But I'm just advocating for the children. Some kind of shelter, especially by the first day of winter, by December, something more permanent. But for now, just a tent or some school buses or city buses. Thanks for your time.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. And thank you, sir, for your comments and, and your questions. I am curious, with regards to a bus stop, I mean, that's still considered city property, I would assume. So anything that the gentleman had proposed to look at and so forth would probably have to start through the city engineering department, wouldn't it?
I wouldn't have the slightest idea where to start.
Exactly.
We, we can't even get money for schools, shelters. I mean, it, 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 that's, that's something that's not within our purview and, you know, we can surely inquire, but it would have to be a serious inquiry. We got, we got a load of suggestions. Was that it?
Well, that was, I mean, it, that was it. I mean, it, again, I think it's a valid question in, in response. I know last winter, it was very, well, we all know about last winter, and some predictions are gonna be the same. And there was a lot of ideas there from coats and so forth, and I, I understand that. I don't think it wouldn't hurt to inquire on that side what that would look like or encompass, but again, like you, Chairman Bridgeford, I don't, I'm not even sure which department we would even approach.
Okay. Ms. Heinz?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford. One, I would kind of be hesitant to put permanent structures at bus stops as they do change based on enrollment and where our students come from. So we're not always guaranteed, we have trends, but they're not permanent bus stops like HRT. Maybe we talk, and, and this would be more to Mr. Steele, maybe we look at our bus drivers and having more street runs throughout the neighborhoods on the days where it is inclement weather. I know especially for our, you know, for some of our elementary students, you know, getting off the bus at quarter to five when it's already dark in January is an issue. And the early morning is an issue as well. And so while we do have bus stops on those days where there are, where there is bad weather, maybe we can work with our bus drivers in just doing more street neighborhood house, you know, house, street runs rather than the big intersections so that if it is cold or, you know, super rainy, super snowy, which we wouldn't be going to school, hopefully, we've made the call early enough that everybody knows that, that we can have some leniency with our bus drivers to do some street runs and do, I'm not advocating for door-to-door, that's not what I'm saying, but on a street where we've got four or five students, maybe instead of dropping them off the, the corner before, we can bump it up and drop them off at the next corner in those instances where there is inclement weather. That would be the short-term suggestion because I really don't think permanent structures at school bus stops is gonna be a per, it, it just can't be a permanent answer because those do change year to year.
Remba Chillo?
Thank you, sir. I just have one question, Mr. Falk. Is there appropriate lighting for the kids where their bus stop is located? Is it a, a well-lit area or is it completely dark?
Uh, well, it is light in most of the neighborhoods, thanks for asking, but the children normally go where they feel comfortable at. Three children might be here, seven children might be over here. It's usually where they feel comfortable at and no normal way.
Hold on, hold on a minute. And from now, wouldn't it light that we need to have them come back up there so it can be recorded? And please keep your answers short.
Yes, sir. Normally, children, you know, they, they get in little, little groups. So some children, you know, they stand close together, but not too close together. You might have three children over here, 10 feet away, you might have six or seven other children. As far as the lighting, they might stand under the light. All I notice is that it's dark. And sometimes it's raining, but, you know, the autumn just started. It's all right in the summer, but the autumn just started. So to the best of my knowledge, is, is, you, you know, I can go and investigate it for you, look at the neighborhoods, or you guys can do it. You know, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not looking for a... You know, I'm just saying, I'm not looking for a permanent structure till the winter. But right now, something can be put up, a tent, or early buses, or ask the county council for, get out there, put some cars, or, you know, something. But, you know, just put some in investigation, but they deserve it.
Thank you. And, thank you sir. And Mr. Chairman, I also had a statement. Would it be possible, are we gonna send out a statement in reference to Ms. Ambrose's statement from convocation at all?
Mr. Parent wanted to make, you can make an individual statement on your own, if you have.
I mean, as a division, where we're gonna do it?
Well, right now, I think that was, that was put on by the school system. I didn't, I was unaware what the program was consist of until I got there on stage, so I don't know. So I didn't put it together. So we probably need to talk with the people that put it together, and make sure that they're aware, to get, if we don't have a policy, make sure that the policy is followed. That's what I would like to do before we make any type of statement. Because until I got up there on stage, I didn't see what the program consisted of.
Okay. I just wanted, so she'd know we were taking that seriously.
Yeah, I was gonna find out, you know, whoever put the program together and this type of thing, then, from there, and then we can make a statement afterwards.
Thank you sir.
Okay. Mr. Parent, Mr. Parent, and then Dr. Bracy.
Yeah, yes. Ms. Ambrose, I was a former middle school social studies teacher, so I do understand the separation of church and state. But now as a minister of the gospel, if you recall, if you, I'm sure you have shared with your students, throughout the years, the United States Senate has honored the historic separation of church and state, but not the separation of God and state. During the past 200-plus years, all sessions of the Senate have been opened with prayers strongly affirming that the Senate's faith in God and sovereign Lord of our nation. It is the role of the chaplain to be nonpartisan, to be nonpolitical, and to be nonsectarian. I don't believe that at our convocation that we were in violation of any of those. I think this, I think you're taking an exception to the fact that we use that Jesus Christ's name. I think that if, if the person that did the invocation referred to God or Creator, you probably would not have mentioned this at all. But, but the United States Senate opens each, each time with a prayer, and it is, it's been a long tradition, and there's never been a violation of separation of churches and state. But we don't divorce ourselves that we do have a sovereign, sovereign God and sovereign Lord. That, that's my statement. And I don't want to get into debate with you tonight, but I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you, if you want to talk. But I think you need to let your students know that the United States Senate does open with, with prayer. Thank you. No, there's no, there's no debate. You've made your statement, I've made mine. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Brenda Joseph.
I have custody of three children, two at Churchland Primary and one at Churchland Middle. The first year in 2013, they held a PTA meeting.
Hold, hold on a minute. Did you give your name and everything at the start?
Well, she said, I Brenda Joseph.
Yeah, but you need to say it, and your address, and your address.
4205 Somerset Drive, Portsmouth.
Okay, thank you.
The first year, they held a regular PTA meeting. Last year, they did not hold a regular PTA meeting. Tonight again, they sent notices home saying it was a PTA meeting. Again, no PTA meeting. It was just go to the room. I wonder when they gonna hold a PTA meeting, talking about getting people to join PTA? It was nobody there to join PTA tonight. I was there 10 minutes and left and said, I'm coming downtown. Now, my second problem is, I have the child that needs help. I've been before this boy, three years in a row now, asking for help. So far this year, he has brought home a 27 today, a 40, and a 50 this week. I don't know when the school system's gonna give him any help that he needs. I emailed the teacher, she hasn't responded. I emailed Mrs. Freeman, she responded by saying, thanks Ms. Joseph, but I haven't heard no more. This child's already a year behind, and he's not doing sixth grade work this year. What he's brought home, he's brought home four papers in 13 days. Nothing's been posted in the parent portal, not the first grade. I know she's a teacher from Victory, got transferred. Maybe Victory does it different from Churchland Primary, I don't know. All I know, whoever made the choice to move Ms. Exum to Churchland Elementary made a wrong choice, because Ms. Exum was the one that ran that school the best. Because I would've heard something from Ms. Exum instead of just, thanks Ms. Joseph. I would've heard, she would've called me up and talked to me about this child that's already failing. I sent him to summer school, he failed summer school, and I've been before, Ellen before, been having meetings, and every time, the school system turns him down. Evidently, the school system wants him to be one of these people that live on the street. Because with the education he's getting, he's not gonna get a job.
Ms. Joseph, can I assume that you've already sat down and talked with the administration at Churchland Primary?
Not this year I haven't. I have for the last, ever since 2012, I have talked to them every year.
Okay, well, let me do this. Let me ask Dr. Bracy, and you know who to assign this to, because I don't want to go assign anyone anything. Let Dr. Bracy take the lead on this, and he'll make arrangements for the right person to get a hold of this, and then you can, you can sit down with them if they can find out exactly what's going on, okay?
Okay.
Because we're not getting anywhere if you just bring it to us.
But I'm still putting a request to get Ms. Exum back at Churchland Primary, because she knows the children.
Okay. Are there any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
No. If there are any additional speakers, you may request permission to speak from the board at this time.
Good evening, members of Portsmouth School Board. My name is Sergio Neal. I live at 4114 Shiller Crescent in the city of Chesapeake. I come before you right now, I am a alumni of Portsmouth Public Schools, and we have started, me and several people that I went to a high school with, have started a program called the Circle of Youth Community Outreach. One of the primary things that we do is that we help support the local students in the Portsmouth community, and the outside of school to be able to be productive citizens. I was just listening to the lady that was up here before me that's struggling with having her child, having more attention at the school, and that's another thing that we do. We offer free tutoring sessions, free mentoring sessions, free community involvement sessions with any person that has a child in Portsmouth that's in the school. We really focus on the ages of 13 to 17. However, we are expanding to include all ages, because we know that is a difficult point in any child's life, whether they be five, or whether they be 17, having to go through the public school system with everything that's going on in the community around them. We offer our full services to Portsmouth Public Schools free of charge, if the school system will allow us to come in and work with those students. I know money is a problem. I'm an operations manager for a restaurant myself, so I know that how budgets work. However, I'm here to tell you as the vice president of this, of this organization, that we are 100% committed to helping the students to see in any way we can. I believe Mr. Lamb spoke on, on organizations joining the PTA. We, two of the board members that I have, have actually joined the PTA at Waters Middle School. However, we wanted to join as an organization to reach out to all of the schools at one time as a, as a body. So that was, I'm glad Mr. Lamb brought that up, because we, we see the challenges that are faced in the public school systems, and believe me, it's one of those things that we really want to help with the education of the students, because we know that growing up in today's society, there's a lot of negative things that go on, and a lot of parents that have lost trust in the school system, especially the public school systems, and we want to help them renegotiate that trust in the public school systems. I can tell you right now that I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have been where I'm at, not having the education that I received in the Portsmouth Public School System. And I have not been to college at all. It was just the lessons that I learned being taught by teachers in the Portsmouth Public School Systems that have helped me be successful in my life, and helped me to be where I'm at right now. So we wanted to give back to the Portsmouth Public School Systems, and let them know that we are here for y'all. If it's anything that we can do, feel free to give us a call. We have plenty of different professionals that are on our board, that are willing to offer their services free of charge. If y'all know of any parents that need help, we can go out and meet with them. We meet every first and third Saturday at the Kroger Midtown Marketplace in the Norcom Room. So if anybody has, anybody would like to come out and see what we do, feel free. We're on Facebook at Circle, facebook.com/circleofyouth, just to get a background of where we are. And if y'all have anything for me while I'm here, that's basically what I wanted to let y'all know. But we, we are here to support the Portsmouth Public School System. We appreciate all y'all do for the students. I still have family members that are in the Portsmouth Public School System, and they are ready to learn, they're ready to go, and it's just that, you know, we are here to be the extra support behind them. So I thank y'all for the time.
Reverend Patello?
Thank you sir. Mr. Neal, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for the effort you're putting into giving back to the Portsmouth School System. I think it would probably be beneficial if you all, maybe one meeting could sign up with the clerk and maybe do a presentation of what you all actually have to offer as a whole, because we do have schools and principals that are seeking for volunteers and tutors. So I think a good presentation would actually help you reach out more to the school system as a whole. But I do applaud all that you all are doing, and I've seen your posts on Facebook, you're doing a lot of great things in the community. But I do think a larger presentation, so that everyone can see exactly everything you do, would be really beneficial. Thank you.
We would definitely do that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Parent?
Thank you very much for coming forward. It's interesting that those, those traits that you were taught while you were attending the school system, were character, based on character and values and humility, and knowing how to treat each brother and sister in a way that they should be treated. So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Right. Ms. Heinz?
Thank you Chairman. Mr. Neal, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your enthusiasm. Thank you for being you and offering those services. When you said the ages of 13 to 17, as a middle school teacher, I'm just gonna say wow, because that is an age that needs assistance, that needs good mentors, that needs good role models. So I want to thank you and your group for stepping up. I look forward to meeting you one day, one Saturday at a Kroger. I would also implore you to get your information to Dr. Bracy, so that he can share it with his administrative team, so they can do the vetting that they need to do, so that we can share it appropriately. And Dr. Bracy, I hate to feel like I'm speaking for you, but I would like for it to go through him as well, because we do have students that need help, but we also need families that need alternatives, and need to know where to go to ask those questions. And I just want to thank you for stepping up, because it's not, it's something that people talk about doing, but they don't actually follow through with it. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you ma'am.
Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. Neal and Ms. Heinz. Thank you for just saying what I was gonna mention anyway. But anyway, we definitely want you to make sure that you get your information to Mr. Wiggins here on the corner, so that we can reach out to you, because we do need community support, and we ask for community engagement. So we definitely want to take you up on your offer.
Definitely.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes, thank you Chairman Bridgeford. Real quick, I'm not sure if I caught the first and third Saturday.
Yes.
But I wasn't sure if I caught the time.
It's, oh, I'm sorry, I failed to mention the time. It's normally from 12 to 3, 12 to 2, depending on what's going on, because of the different, we have our own curriculum that we follow. We do education, and we do community outreach some days, so it just depends on what's going on that particular Saturday. But we always have some structure to what we're doing. And if there is something that the school system needs, that we, that we can include in those sessions, by all means necessary, just let us know, and we can do our best, whatever the best of our ability is to reinforce that to, to them. We did, we, for the child, for the children that are members of the group, we know, we have charged a $25 registration fee, and that's for, for the year. However, we are in the process of trying to eliminate that registration fee 100%, and we're doing the necessary process to try to raise funds to get them just involved, because we see right now that a lot of the families don't have that $25 registration fee, and we're just, you know, if it takes for me, or one of the staff members to come out, I mean, not one of the staff, but one of the board members to come out their pocket, and we're, we're very willing to do that. We've had one of the local churches to raise some funds, so they've given us a boost to, you know, to allow children just to sign up without any coming out of pocket. We're not in the business of turning anyone down. We're just like a hospital. If somebody needs help, by all means necessary, that's what we do.
Mr. Parent?
I'm not addressing his question. I'm, I'm addressing, Reverend Patello, a few minutes ago, asked the question, or I thought you were getting ready to ask the question, will we prepare a statement to, and I didn't, you didn't finish it, or I didn't hear what you were getting ready to say, in, in reference to Ms. Ambrose and convocation?
Mr. Bridgeford said that he was gonna do some more research on that, and then we would talk about that another time.
And you were getting, I thought you were getting ready to say something, but you weren't.
I can.
The only thing, the only thing I would suggest is that, before we make any kind of statement, that we need to make sure that our attorney reviews that, and I don't want us to put out a statement right now, or any kind of decision until we...
That was the purpose of what I did.
Well, okay. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that's, that's it.
Okay. Next item, 6.1, monthly report, curriculum and instruction. Dr. Anita W. Taylor, Assistant Superintendent. Dr. Bracy, you had anything before she starts?
No sir. Dr. Taylor will come and give us the curriculum report.
Chairman Bridgeford, Vice Chairman Parent, and members of the school board, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It is my pleasure to give you the September 2015 Curriculum and Instruction Report. We have had a phenomenal school opening. It was very upbeat, everyone was prepared, our buildings were sparkling, there were smiles on people's faces, and the feedback from our parents and our students and our staff indicates that we are definitely sailing smoothly. So we're very pleased to inform you of that tonight. Want to make just a few congratulations and kudos for individuals who are doing and have done great jobs. We have 27 students enrolled in the Governor's School of the Arts. This school year, 17 of those students are from Churchland, and we have 10 students from Woodrow Wilson. The Museum of Contemporary Art in Virginia Beach has made Portsmouth Public Schools the recipient of a grant that will provide a tour of the museum for all of our Grade IV students. And one of the goals that we have for this year is to make sure that we provide more of these types of opportunities for our students, especially with the arts and music. The grant covers about $10,000, which will be the cost of a mission, the Dawson's Tour, a hands-on activity, and transportation. Catherine McAllister, Special Education Teacher at Olive Branch Preschool, is serving as the President of Portsmouth Children First Lions Club. It's a chapter with a specific mission to serve preschoolers with disabilities in Portsmouth. Lisa Garing, who is our Special Education Specialist, has been selected to serve on Virginia's Special Advisory Committee to the State President for Delta Kappa Gamma Society International. And this is a professional honor society for women educators, and she's also serving as the Vice President of Portsmouth Children First Lions Club. Six students successfully completed a community-based work experience at the Goodwill Retail Store through our School to Work Program last year, and those, two of those students were from I.C. Norcom, and four were from Wilson High School. We have a few announcements, just to keep the board apprised of what we are doing to strengthen our instruction and our practices. We now have all of our school improvement meetings scheduled, and the agenda's set for our governance, our academic review, and our school improvement. Staff members have received this information, and the plans are in motion to begin our processes for these. A new school improvement plan is being finalized for our pre-K and for our alternative school new directions. Um, and all of our other schools, of course, will be using the state, um, the state school improvement process, which is Indus Star. Dr. Antonia Fox, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, is working with our high schools to review our, um, our processes for national honor society and build consistency across the schools with respect to the program. We are also looking at our gifted and talented, uh, programs to strengthen and to bring consistency to those guidelines as well. September 30th is the Curriculum and Instruction Professional Development Date and all of our staff will be engaged in relevant research-based, job-specific professional development. The Office of Youth Risk will be scheduling the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Training for all of our elementary and middle schools to strengthen our disciplinary practices and support that implementation across our schools. October is Disability History and Awareness Month and Physical Therapy Month. And the Office of Special Education is providing information, uh, in preparation for our schools and the community regarding awareness activities, uh, for these topics. On Octo- from October 20th to the 22nd, our 11th graders will be taking the end-of-course English Assessment. The Office of Adult Education brochure is available, um, on the Portsmouth Public Schools website, Adult Education website and the Woodrow Wilson High School website. This brochure includes course offerings, um, locations and fees and copies of the class offers and offerings, locations and fees are available in all of our schools and offices. Interactive Achievement has awarded the Virginia Department of Education a contract to provide comprehensive data analysis in a single place for all of Virginia's schools and school divisions. This information is available for administrators, for staff and for teachers. The Interactive Achievement System is known as On Track LDS and it will replace the EIMS System, which is the Education Information Management System that Virginia has used for many years. The state contract is for two years and we can possibly, uh, have another three optional one-year renewals. The LDS module has tools for interac- intervention tracking, behavior and attendance monitoring as well as easy analysis of our assessment data. So, it will be more user-friendly. Staff and students began this school year with great momentum. The Office of Curriculum Instruction is committed to ensuring that all of our schools receive the support and resources they need to ensure excellence for all. We are excited for this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Mr. Parent?
Um, thank you for this report. It is exciting to get back and, uh, start a new school year. Um, you had mentioned this summer that, um, the teachers would have a new, a lesson plan format?
Yes.
Um, is it possible that the board could receive a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Um, because how, have we had professional develop, I mean, have the teachers been, uh, given, I mean, they, they're, they're using it now? Are they using it now?
Yes.
Have they been trained?
Yes, the teachers are using the, the new, uh, lesson plan format. We ruled, we rolled it out, if you will recall, during the Leadership Institute.
Right.
We had a committee that developed it. We shared it at the institute with all of the administrators and we are now conducting trainings with the teachers to help them understand how to utilize it. In fact, I believe there's a team that will be doing a training on September 29th on Tuesday. Um, and there will be ongoing trainings for teachers, um, both in groups and, um, at schools and independently if needed.
So, is, this is more or less a one page? In other words, if I taught in elementary and I taught all the subjects, I would have one lesson plan for math, science, social studies?
It is designed to be aligned with what the advanced academic review process requires of our teachers. It's a little bit more simplified than what we have done before because it's based upon, um, the behaviors, um, behavior, skills and abilities. And those are aligned with the requirements for our advanced academic review process, which is part of our school improvement process. Um, the form is aligned also with, um, with teachers' ability to collaborate with each other. And so, it's simplified, it's a one-pager when you look at it, but when the teacher's actually completed, it winds up being more than one page because they have to fill in specific things.
Okay.
So, um, much of the feedback that we've gotten indicates that teachers feel that it's much more simple than what they've been required to do in the past.
Okay.
And while it is something different that they're having to learn, um, it is a tool that was developed with the input of teachers and a committee, uh, to make it more user-friendly for them.
Is this a, in a, like, format of a PDF file?
It's, um, it's a, it's a fillable form that they can pull up online and they can do it electronically.
Good.
Yep. We have it.
Dr. Woodrow?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Taylor. Um, I had a question. This summer at the retreat, we, we had a presentation on the vocational programs that were being offered.
Yes.
And there was some discussion about revamping what we're offering, how we're offering it, um, because there's a lot of attention being, well, paid to first college, but we talked about trying to put in place something like a first tech career program. And I was, um, wanted to know where we were.
We are still having some discussion around that. We're actually in the process of meeting with, um, the provost. Dr. Bracy and I have a meeting with the provost and, um, administrators at TCC to talk about the expansion of offerings, looking at, uh, what we can offer on campus through our high schools and what we can offer through TCC. Our goal is to provide as much as we can. Um, but currently, any of our students can take courses through TCC because of the Virginia Plan for Dual Enrollment. What we're looking at is how we can structure those courses so that they are more accessible for students from Portsmouth. So, we are having those conversations. Uh, Mr. Hill is very, a significant part of that and we will be, um, working for, looking for ways to structure it so that our students can have, I know you had mentioned, um, courses like LPN and some of the other areas that students can leave with the certificates to be able to compete when they go into the job market. So, that is part of our goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridford. Uh, just going back one step, uh, back to the, the lesson plan.
Yes.
You had said that, that for some, there may be a possibility of doing more than one page. And I think I get what Mr. Parent was also saying too with regards to, you know, if you're an elementary teacher, have on one page for the week for like English and then science. So, my question is, if we're saying that there's a possibility that some will be doing more than one page, are we back up again to 20 and 30 pages?
No, I think when you, I think that you, we can't say it's literally one page. It is a one-page document as written because the components are all listed on one page. For elementary teachers, they still have to plan for each content area that they teach because they teach different subjects.
Right. But the concern is that they're not doing like 20 pages for English and then 20 pages for math.
It doesn't require that number of pages, no, sir. And I would be happy to, um, provide copies of the documents for you and provide some written feedback as well as any, any questions that you have as follow-up. But there should not be a need for a teacher to do a 20-page, uh, lesson plan for one particular content area. I mean, not, not for any reason.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Taylor.
Good evening.
Welcome back. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Most wonderful time of the year. Um, I do have a few questions. Governor's School for the Arts, is that the art side or is that also including math and science as well? Because are there two parts of Governor's School that there's a math and science center? And then there's like a performing arts and a musical piece as well, which?
Typically, the focus would be on the arts, but I think that students can, you know, they can get their other courses as well, but the focus indeed would be on the arts.
Okay. Do we have anybody that goes for math and science? That goes for the tech?
I will have to give you that information at another time, but I can get that for you.
Because I think especially as we start building in some of the technical pieces for, for, um, right after, right after high school being licensed with positions or, um, that edge up for colleges. That would be, um, that would be beneficial for some of our students. Um, I'm glad to hear you say gifted and talented as you look at your program offerings because that was a big, um, a big discussion point of our retreat.
Yes.
Um, one of the other pieces we talked about too was dual enrollment and AP offerings. Um, when we presented that data, probably May or June, there were some issues with, um, just the amount of students at certain schools that were taking so many. Um, so, how can we make sure that that is being offered across the board for, um, so that we have more participation?
Right.
That's percentage-wise. And then you said end-of-course, um, English is going to be October 20th and 22nd. That's the writing piece of English, correct?
Yes.
Um, do we have a process in place already for the expedited retakes and for our retakers? Um, so that we can have some of those students ready to graduate, uh, that still need that?
Well, at the high school level, that process is always in place because expedited retakes have always been a part of the high school curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's automatically a part of the testing process in and of itself.
Okay.
Uh, we tend to try to react very quickly because we, the goal is for those students to take those courses and get the verified credit so that they can graduate. So, high school, that has always been a process.
Okay. Um, we've asked about the lesson plan, so I can skip that one. Um, in Wilson's presentation earlier tonight, they had the Student Run Credit Union that's run through Bayport. Do any of our other schools have student-run credit unions that are within their buildings or is that, is that, um, unique to just Wilson?
That is something I would have to get more information about.
Okay.
I know that, that is a practice in a number of schools. Um, it depends upon whether or not they have a sponsor and those kinds of things.
Okay.
It is something that we would support because it teaches students a lot about financial literacy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I can get that information regarding Norcom and, um, Churchland as well.
Okay. Um, and the, and the last thing I'm, I'm going to ask about is I know that VDOE has a, um, program or, um, lack of a better term, program for character ed.
Mm-hmm.
And so, how was that implemented and, and added into? How is it integrated within our curriculum that we have now that, that we do character ed within our schools? Because we have heard tonight about, um, learning those, those integral lessons as they came up, that not necessarily is a part of a lesson plan.
Right.
But just that character ed for good global citizenship and all that good stuff. So, where is?
Part of that...
What is the state of our character ed?
Part of that is the reason that we're implementing the PBIS, um, because it does in, include a component for character education.
Okay.
Uh, what we have realized in our, uh, assessment is that we do not have, uh, a required character education program within our schools, but that's something that we do want to focus on as we look to build positive behavior interventions and supports.
Okay.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Next item, the 7.1 Monthly Report Human Resources. Mr. Scott A. Ziegler, Director. Dr. Bracy, you have anything to say to him?
As Mr. Ziegler comes, um, our HR department was very busy this summer in making sure that we got quality hires in place. And I want to make sure that I thank him and his staff publicly for the job that they did to make sure, particularly at the elementary and middle school, that we began the year with, with no vacancies. So, thank you and the, the team has already been, um, apprised of, uh, our thanks for what they've done. So, I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Good evening, Chairman Bridford, Vice Chairman Parent, members of the board. It's a privilege to be back in front of you. This is only my second full board meeting, only the second time that I've stood at the diocese, even though it seems like I've been here much longer than that. Um, I would like to start this evening by thanking personally and publicly my staff and HR for their hard work and dedication over the summer hiring season. Special thanks goes out to HR assistants Donna Fenner, Janelle Brown, Miriam Manor, Tonya Pope, Executive Associate Jackie Grant, Licenseur Analyst Mary Hughes, HR Administrator, Staffing Specialist Shawna Hyman, and Senior Supervisor Jessica Duran, and Compliance Officer Danielle Jarvis. Not only did these folks process over 200 new hires, they did so while facing shortage of, of teachers in several critical areas, stiff competition from other two, Region Two school divisions, and probably most difficult of all while dealing with the expectations of a new boss who came in during the midst of all of this chaos. The department continues to work with shoring up our instructional evaluation process. At the first principals' meeting held on September 16th, the director presented several aspects of the teacher evaluation process to principals. The focus for September was working with teachers to develop SMART goals that are tied to measurable, measurable student growth and school improvement plan. Also introduced at the meetings was a Google Sheets document that will allow for tracking each teacher and administrator as they work through the formative and summative evaluation process. Board members should be aware that there may be a slight adjustment period as teachers and administrators become familiar and comfortable with the evaluation system. Change in this area is not always easy, however, an effective evaluation system is necessary to improve instruction and learning in our schools. We will do our best to mitigate these growth pains through a, the development of a transparent system. To that end, the department is making itself available to schools to assist with the evaluation system and its components to school staff. In early October, I will be traveling over to James Hurst Elementary School to introduce the, the teachers and administrators there to the SMART goal process. The structure of the HR department was given some minor tweaks as we strive to better define our roles within the department and provide strategic support to the schools. As part of this process, the job descriptions for the senior supervisor, the compliance officer and the staffing specialist positions were rewritten and distributed to staff members. The superintendent approved two pay reclassifications so that employee pay accurately reflected responsibilities and provided parity within the department. And I have given you, um, in your board packet, copies of the updated job descriptions. And finally, uh, just yesterday, Staffing Specialist Shawna Hyman and Executive Associate Jackie Grant participated in the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Job Fair, Authority Job Fair. This is the first job fair of the season and we have established a goal of increasing our presence at local Virginia and regional job fairs. Um, and they spoke with over, well, they spoke with a lot more, but we had 105 candidates signed in at our table. Most of these were for classified positions with the greatest area of interest being in food services, which is a blessing to us because we are very short in food services right now, followed by custodians and bus drivers. Um, we are encouraging people to apply and we met several, um, applicants who already have their food handler's card or their CDL in hand so they would be able to, uh, go through the hiring process, um, very quickly. Other respondents indicated they were interested in instructional assistant and clerical staff positions. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Uh, Mr. Parent?
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler, for this report and, and thank you for your professionalism. Um, I think your, your staff has done a great job this summer in filling a lot of vacancies.
Thank you.
Maybe this is going to be directed toward you and Dr. Taylor. I, in reading your report and when, and I'm very familiar, and I think most of us on the board are, are familiar with SMART goals.
Mm-hmm.
And when I read the focus for September was to work with teachers to develop SMART goals that are tied to measurable student growth and the school improvement plan, I guess my question is that we have teachers who are writing lesson plans. We have school improvement plans that are developed by a team of, at each school, teachers. And now, we're introducing SMART goals that are going to be, uh, part of the evaluation system. When you go to the Virginia Standards for Professional Practices of Teachers and you look at the, the different, um, areas dealing with, uh, professional knowledge, instructional planning, instructional delivery, assessment and/or for student learning, learning environment and professionalism, I'm having a hard time because what I want to make sure happens is a seamless situation where we're not burdening our teachers and our staff with, here we've got a brand-new, well, you say it's not brand-new, but we've got a, a new schooling, we, we got a new lesson plan. So, they're writing lesson plans. And then you've got, uh, school improvement plans. And I remember a long time ago, because I helped design as Director of School Improvement here in Portsmouth, SMART goals. And I know that probably your background with Virginia Beach Public Schools with the Ball Ridge, uh, criteria, you deal with, we deal with SMART goals. I mean, that's nothing new. But I'm having a hard time and as, as I read this report of how we're going to merge all of this together so that the school improvement plan and the SMART goals, because it says all of this together so that the school improvement plan and the SMART goals, because it says you're going to be at James Hurst presenting this to teachers.
Sure.
Help me to understand that we're not going to put a burden on our teachers writing school improvement plans, lesson plans, and now the teachers are going to be writing SMART goals. How do you, help me to, the both of you, to tie all it together?
Let me preface this by saying that the SMART goals were necessary, was a necessary component in order for us to align with the state requirements for the teacher evaluation process.
I got that. I downloaded, yeah, I got that.
Yeah. And then on top of that, it, it's also necessary to really fairly and accurately evaluate teachers on Standard Seven, which is standard, student growth measures, which accounts for 40% of the teacher's evaluation.
I understand.
So what we're asking teachers to do in September and October, and we have, in order not to burden the teachers, we have already approved Human Resources and Curriculum and Instruction, two extensions to the deadlines to the SMART goal process so that preschool teachers and elementary school teachers will have the data they need in order to formulate those SMART goals. But we need to be able to measure student growth in one cohort, in one classroom, over the course of one year. We can't use SOL data to do that because it doesn't include the same cohort of kids in that teacher's classroom. So the teachers are using their formative assessment data, which includes a myriad of different district and state and some vendor-created tests that they're administering now. And the deadlines were changed to correspond with when they will get those results back. So this is a process where we're not developing SMART goals weekly or even with each unit.
Okay.
What we're doing is we're taking our baseline data, and we're using that to develop a SMART growth goal for the year. So in, let's say, elementary reading, once we get our basal scores, our, our goal, a SMART goal for that teacher would be to show one year's growth above that basal score, which may or may not correlate to SOL data for that class. But if I see in a third grade class, one year's growth in reading ability for a particular class, but limited success on the SOL, I still know that that teacher has done a fairly good job of demonstrating growth with those students and has brought them a full year in reading ability. So that's why they're necessary. It's a one-page document that they develop in coordination with their supervising administrator. They will look at them in September. They'll use that to drive, drive instruction throughout the year. They will update those goals and their progress toward those goals mid-year at the semester mark or mid-semester for our high school teachers. And then they will evaluate them and see if they've been met at the end of the year. So it's not an arduous process, but it is very useful in, one, providing data for the evaluation process, and, two, in helping those teachers to drive instruction toward growth, not necessarily limit our measures to the SOL data.
But the ones that are, and I downloaded all of these from, from the State Department of Education. They're sample, they're, they're different samples. And, and some of them are very, some of them are very detailed.
Mm-hmm.
And that was my concern because I do under, I mean, I, you know, you presented the process, understand the evaluation process, understand all that. I'm just concerned, as a board member and a formative educator, is that I don't want to, I don't want our teachers to be so heavily burdened with a lot of paperwork and a lot of writing. I want them teaching.
Mm-hmm.
Because if they're not teaching, then they're, it doesn't make any difference about the cohorts.
Sure.
The kids aren't going to learn. And I do, I do realize that we do, I mean, we do use the SOL data. If I'm a third-grade teacher, I'm certainly going to look at second, my second-grade scores.
Mm-hmm.
Because, I mean, how they scored, and then I want to make sure that they're new objectives that are going to be, have to be mastered at, at third grade.
Sure.
So I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're not overburdening, and you're going to hear that a lot from me, because I'm very protective of instruction, but I, but I want us to be accountable. I realize we must be accountable and hold people accountable. I just don't want our teachers to be so burdened down with all these different documents.
And I would be surprised, Mr. Parent, if a teacher submitted a SMART goal sheet completely filled out that was more than five to 10 sentences long.
That's, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you. I'm glad to hear you say it's not solely on SOL scores.
Yeah.
Because that, from the retreat, and I will reiterate the point, and you, you made the point that only 30% of our teachers teach in SOL. And so it is about growth. And when you're in that, when you're in that classroom, and you will have a fifth-grade class, and you have three or four SOL tests, depending on, you know, what division you're in, because I'm talking for all teachers at this moment in time, you're still going to have those children that come to you that are below grade level, that even though they're making growth, they're still not going to make that 400 on that SOL test.
Sure.
So I'm glad to hear you say, I wrote it down. I just wanted to hear it one more time. It's not solely on SOL scores because we all know, and we've all been in those buildings, if you've been in education any time, that fourth graders that are coming to you, you know, that are reading almost at a two, second-grade level, you know, at a 2.0. So, but I think to go to Mr. Parent's point, these evaluations are not every teacher every year.
That's correct.
Or are they? I mean, you've got a cycle, you've got a, everybody within three or five years.
It's, that's correct. There, there are several different cycles. So you have a probationary, a P1 teacher who is someone in their first year of teaching or their first year back after an extended absence from teaching. They will be evaluated each year, a summative evaluation, in each of their three, first three years. And that, in some instances, can be extended to five, but we'll say the first three years. Then you have your PC, which are probationary continuing contract. That means they've come to us from another Virginia school division, having achieved continuing contract in that other school division. They will be evaluated, a summative evaluation, that year as well. Our continuing contract teachers are on a three-year cycle. We refer to them as F1, Formative Year One, Formative Year Two, and then the Summative Year. So at any given year, we have approximately one-third of our teachers who are going through the summative process. In other words, they'll, at the end of that year, they'll get a summative evaluation. However, our F1 and F2 teachers are still required to submit goals, SMART goals, at the beginning of the year. Principals are required to see them a number of times throughout each of the F1 and F2 years, so that when a teacher gets to the third year, the principal or the supervising administrator has a myriad of data from which to pull in order to accurately rate that teacher. And so we're no longer rating teachers based on, this is your third year, so I'm going to either come and get you, or I'm going to come and praise you. We're going to have three years' worth of data, and, and that will enable us to intervene earlier when coaching is needed, number one, but number two, also give a fairer assessment of that teacher's performance in the classroom.
Okay. One more piece, and we may have discussed it, and I apologize if I have forgotten. Administrators, are they on the same type of evaluation system? Where, where are we with principals?
Yes. The administrators, the principal evaluation instrument was changed pretty soon after I got here. We had a consultant come in and redid the manual. The process is nearly exactly the same. The seven professional standards are the same. The requirement to develop goals is the same. And I'm, I'm not sure where they're at in the process, but all the principals were scheduled to meet either with Dr. Bracy or Dr. Taylor to develop goals for the school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Layle?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgford. I, I've heard that we've got this down to one page and no more than five sentences per page for a SMART goal. I'm very familiar with SMART goals myself, having to, to develop them. So my question is, how many SMART goals is a teacher doing? Are we, are we setting this up to where, if you're in elementary school, are you having four SMART goals for every subject? Or what do we do? How many SMART goals does a teacher have to put together?
Well, what my recommendation to principals is, is that no more than three. Because as you know, the more goals that you develop, the lesser, the, the more they diminish in importance and achievability. So what I recommend to principals is three. You're going to have one related to student growth, one personal goal that you may be trying to develop as a teacher, and one related to the school improvement plan. So I would say no more than three. And the other sentences that would be required are a statement of the, the makeup of your class. So I have a third-grade class with 21 members, 15 boys, four girl, you know, whatever, and an X number of special ed students. So that would be one sentence, and then you would go down to develop your SMART goals.
Okay.
What was the second one? You said student, uh, growth, school improvement plan. What was the second?
A, a personal goal.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And there is flexibility in that, some principals. I would strongly discourage any principal from prescribing more of that, and I've had questions from principals and have already been kind of putting them on the right track because it's a newer process for a lot of them. But I think most are getting it, and especially after our last principals' meeting where we presented on this formally.
All right. Mr. Parent?
Well, Dr. Taylor?
Yeah.
The new revised school improvement plan, the newly revised school improvement plan, do we have SMART goals? I mean, how, how different, how different is the, the school improvement plan we've been using in, in previous years as to now? What is, I mean, what does it look like? Does it look like the same, or does it incorporate SMART goals? Because I've seen school improvement plans from other school divisions that incorporate SMART goals. I mean, they're written that way.
The school improvement plans that we currently use are the ones that are put in by the state, which is Indistar, and they are completely aligned with what we're doing in our lesson plans. What we are trying to help our administrators and staff understand is that the school improvement process is about improvement.
Right.
And it's about the data, and all of that should be aligned. I mean, we should have a strategic plan that outlines what we do in our school improvement plans. And our school improvement plan should guide our staff in what they do to improve their practice. And so that, it, it all aligns. And so the, to answer your question, though, the process for the Indistar is what is outlined by the state. The two school improvement plans that we have developed are basically built around goals.
Sure.
A goal for, you know, the school.
Right.
And then goes around the academics. It's, it's pretty much the same format that we had before, but we've simplified it and made it not so overwhelming. And one of the things that we're stressing to the schools is, don't develop so many goals that you can't achieve them. So we're asking them to focus on two or three major strategies around a particular goal. And that's something that we'll be working with the preschools and New Directions for those particular school improvement plans. But the other ones are guided by the tasks that we set up around our needs as determined by our assessment data in Indistar, if that makes sense.
Well, is there one on attendance, parental involvement, discipline? Are they, those are the ones?
Not necessarily. It would depend upon what we identify from the, from the data and what we select in, in, in Indistar as the task around the goal that we want to focus on. So it's, it's largely around student achievement. It could be around an assessment and possibly attendance, yes. All of those are factors, though, that impact student achievement.
But when the principals come before the group, the instruct, your department?
Right.
They're presenting, their presentation is going to be what? Because I don't, the years passed that I have gone, I mean, they're, they're reading the school improvement, improvement plan. I mean, I wonder.
Well, Dr. Fox and I are developing a new process for that along with Ms. Powell and Mr. Nottingham, because what we want is for principals to come and basically give an update on how they've been monitoring their assessments and their student performance within their buildings. It needs to be more specific to the needs of the school. And a true school improvement plan is a working, living plan.
Right. Exactly.
And so we want to build in quarterly reports that give updates on where you are in the goals that you set and the progress that you made toward those goals.
Right.
So it will be very different from the format that we've had in the past because it will be more individualized, and there will be more interaction and collaboration with division-level staff, getting input on what we can do to improve our student progress.
It's good to hear. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item for electronic vote, Employee Transaction Report, September 2015. Board's pleasure, or is it? Lady Fox, please. I think, okay, I think she did. Okay, it's been moved to probably the second that we adopt a transaction report for September 2015 in the discussion. If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Budget and Plan, Monthly Report, Budget and Planning, Mr. Chris Will Pease, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Bracy, you have anything before he starts?
No service. Come on up, Mr. Still.
Good evening. Good evening. Chairman Bridgford, Vice Chair, Parent, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy. I'm going to go over highlights from the different activities going on within Budget and Planning. The first item in my report, we're already starting the cycle for the FY '17 budget, and hearing some encouraging news from Governor McAuliffe on August 27th. As part of the two-year biennial budget, he will be proposing what he calls substantial state investment in public education for K-12. So that's an encouraging sign since most of our funding comes from the state. We don't have specifics yet. The December, in December, the governor's budget will have the specifics that we can evaluate exactly how it affects Portsmouth Public Schools. And further in this description, it does talk about the state needing to come back to 2007 levels as far as direct aid for public education, and we're hopeful we can take a step in that direction. The next item is providing you a letter from the State Auditor of Public Accounts. This basically is an audit of our external auditor, Cherry Beckett, which is the auditor for both the city and the school district. And in that, they review our auditor to ensure that they're following certain standards in the audit of municipalities and school districts. They take a look at different circulars and standards for audits of county, cities, and towns, and government auditing standards, and the audits of states, local governments, and nonprofits. You either are graded, given a rating of pass, pass with deficiencies, or fail, and our external auditor, Cherry Beckett, received a review rating of pass. In the next, I won't go through all these projects, but I wanted to provide the board a listing of all the projects that Facilities was doing over the summer. They spent a lot of hard work, both with our own folks and then projects that we had contracted for, including contracts that were approved by the board. And you can see a list of those summer projects for painting, carpet replacement, paving, and then a lot of moves and relocations, renovations, and a lot of other in-house tasks. And I've listed those with what they were doing at each of the schools. And I think they took a big step forward, and with the resources we had, really did a lot during the summer, and I commend the staff at Facilities. Also, I'd like, it's not in your, in the monthly report, but I have an update on the boiler contract that was awarded for IC Norcom. And to let you know that, that, that's on track, the, at the beginning of October, will begin demolition of the old boilers in IC Norcom. It's set right now for October 5th or thereabouts. And then the new boilers are set to arrive at the, toward the end of October, on October 20th. And there'll be two boilers replaced with three, which will be more energy efficient and provide more staging to save utility costs. Once the new boilers are installed and a factory startup has been completed, which is estimated approximately two weeks, the contractor will turn the project over to Portsmouth Public Schools, and will connect that to the, the control, the controllers that we have for each of the building's HVAC systems. In food service, as you know, we participated in the community eligibility program last year with three schools, I believe, and this year we've expanded to 12 schools. The schools are Mount Herman Preschool, Olive Branch, John Tyler, West Haven, Brighton, Douglas Park, James Hurst, Parkview, Lakeview, Project Uplift, now New Directions, Craddock Middle and Waters Middle. The CE program, CEP program, as you may know, offers free meals to all students for breakfast and lunch in participating schools. And the intent is to improve access to free school meals in eligible districts and schools and eliminate the administrative burden of collecting household applications. So this is a, a big plus, not only for the students, but also administrating the, administering the, the programs. No federal funds will be required to support this ECE program, and the participation of students eating breakfast and lunch will, is expected to increase due to this program. Additionally, food service was Additionally, food service was notified that four schools were granted to be, to participate in the fresh fruit and vegetable program for 2015-16 school year, as James Hurst Elementary, Brighton Elementary, Douglas Park, and Parkview. These schools will receive fresh fruit and vegetables in the afternoon, three days a week throughout the school year, with no charge to the student. This program promotes healthy eating from our students by providing healthy fruits and vegetables that would not otherwise have a chance to eat. They will be provided nutritional information about the fruit and vegetables that they are eating for the day to, again, promote healthy eating and healthy lifestyles. The approximate value of this grant is, is between $30,000 to $45,000 per school. From the purchasing office, some noteworthy items, including two of our staff members, Nadine Wassman and Cassandra Smith, both completed a professional certification requirements as a Virginia Contracting Associate, VCA. Certification is provided through the Commonwealth Virginia Institute of Procurement. The certification requires a vigorous program of classroom instruction together with the successful completion of a comprehensive exam. Both Nadine and Cassandra demonstrated their understanding of Virginia Public Procurement Law Regulations and Policies governing all small purchase requirements and their ability to apply them. As you know, we closed the print shop as a cost-saving measure this past year, so the purchasing office developed and disseminated procurement procedures for printing services and also established a number of printing contracts, particularly with MWBE vendors. And with the closure of the print shop, guidelines were sent out to the schools, departments, and divisions to now use those, those services from those vendors. Tony Canyon, our purchasing manager, and Cassandra Smith also attended the 2015 Supplier Diversity Advocate Institute. This institute was hosted by VAS Cup, which is a purchasing organization for universities and colleges in Virginia, and VHGP, which is the Virginia Association of Government Purchasers. This institute was conducted on August 7th, 2015, and provided information and tools necessary for supplier diversity managers and advocates to strengthen supplier diversity knowledge and apply the knowledge in approving programs. And in addition, Purchasing conducted a lot of, beginning of school training for P-cards, for new cardholders, and refresher for existing cardholders, and also conducted training sessions to include MWBE program training sessions, particularly for CTA teachers at Woodrow Wilson. I've also listed from Purchasing a number of future procurements that are coming up. To keep you aware, a number of these will be presented to the, to the board in future meetings. And in the earlier session, I provided an update to the Churchland Public Address System where the city did award a contract to replace the public address system at Churchland High School. The next items on transportation talk about a number of items, including transport, training that was conducted for bus drivers, monitors, and crossing guards, and also key people within transportation. There's a short discussion about accidents and, at-fault accidents and incidents. To put that in perspective, though, from a annual perspective, one of the positive things that we're seeing is that our claims have gone down and our insurance claims have gone down, so that's always a good thing. And so I commend Transportation, and particularly the drivers, for, for safe driving of our, our children. The next item on new hires and as, as indicated by Human Resources, that is still one of the issues with facilities and custodians and bus drivers, and we're still, and food service. I can tell you that starting for this year, though, as compared to last year, we're in better shape than we were last year. For equipment, as was discussed in previous meetings, we did install a new repeater, which would provide for clear and stronger communication between our transportation office and, and our buses. 138 radios are now working, and we still need to complete 24 that can't be upgraded to the new frequency until we upgrade their radios, and we're in the middle of that now. And right now, we have cameras working in all our buses except for two spare lift buses, and we won't be using them until the cameras are installed. As you know, a few months ago, we did receive, complete the receipt of nine new regular buses and three new special ed lift buses, and they're now in service. And that ends my monthly report. Reverend Patullo?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Steel, did we ever get an update on the locker rooms at Waters Middle School and Churchland High School?
Well, that's, that's on our spend list and one of our top priority projects. Those currently aren't funded right now. And we're looking at both end-of-year funds, which may not be available, so we're also looking at other, diverting from other funds that may be available for corrective maintenance and replacement and things like that from the facility's budget.
Okay, because I'm, I'm really concerned with those. They seem unsanitary to me when you, when I look at them. And I'm not sure if there's something that can be done emergency-wise, or they're, they're really in bad shape if you-
You're saying at Waters?
Waters and Churchland.
And Churchland. I'll check the specifics of both of those and see what we can do in the interim.
Yeah, I mean, lockers are hanging off at Waters and things of that sort, and showers can't be used, and if we can really take a hard, serious look at that, that's why I brought it up a few times ago.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Parent?
To address Reverend Patullo, but on our year-end spending, spend plan, it's, I mean, it's on the list, but as you said, it's got to be funded because you've got Waters Middle School and you've got Churchland, Churchland, and, I mean, it's on our master list, but unless we receive funds, we can't do any of that.
That's true. And so we're taking a hard look at where we can make-
We got a-
-funds available. And so we're going through the prioritization process and looking if we can reprioritize maybe some things that are not quite as high priority into those, those projects.
The other question, September 16th, we got an announcement from the governor's office of the $6 million in school security equipment grants, of which Portsmouth is going to receive $96,000. Is there any particular reason why Churchland High School and Wilson High School were chosen? I mean, what was the criteria? Because it's specifically for Churchland High School and Wilson. Why not Norcom? Was Norcom, did it not meet requirements, or we already have the equipment at Norcom?
I don't know the full background of that, although I do, this is, this is the second or third year of these security grants being given. So the other schools were included in the previous ones. And in this particular application, there was discussion of splitting the funds and having, like, some cameras at a bunch of schools versus, they wanted to do complete system swap-out or installation, and the two schools that seemed to fit that bill the best were the two that were put into the grant application. There is, I believe, another year on this security application, and we want to take advantage of that, too. I can say that the max that a school district could get was $100,000, and we qualified for $96,000 based on the merit of our application, which, you know, we showed them that these two areas were definitely in need.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Mr. Steel, I want to thank you for answering my series of questions that's been back and forth with us for about a month now on one of the things we're about ready to vote on with the VRS options that we had. So thank you, because they were, it was a series of questions and we went back and forth, so thank you. I want to say congratulations on the security grant, and I look forward to next year's grant as well, so that we can make sure that all of our buildings have equitable and are covered as best as that, as we can make it. So I'll look forward to those purchase orders as they come through, so we can get those things in place. Thank you for the update on Norcom, because that was on my list to ask. As I look at your presentation today on your future solicitations, the HVAC study for Churchland High School, I know we talked about that a little bit earlier. I would also suggest that we look at Norcom as well, considering that they were both built within the same generation, within the same 10 years, both, you know. If we haven't done a lot of preventative on it, then we're going to have to do a lot of repairing on it. And I don't know if there's a way that we can put both of those studies together. You know, sometimes volume will drive the price down a little bit more, but we know that needs to be taken care of as well. So speaking of energy, we just, last month, paid our last bill to Amoresco for our initial contract that we had with them for 10 years. In that initial contract, I'm sure that there were some goals, some savings goals, some goals that Amoresco made in that original bid. Is there a way that we can get a follow-up as to, did those goals pan out? If they said that we were going to save X amount of dollars with this and this, did that happen? Because I know that we will probably want to go again into another energy savings bid, and I would like to know what their completion rate has been. Did they do as promised? And if they did not do as promised, do we have any negotiating room for any type of refund that's available because they did not hold up their promise? I don't know if that was in the original contract, but I'm sure there were goals that were set aside, so I'd like to know where we are with those goals over the 10 years that we've had that contract with them. If that, not in any hurry, but I think we need to see that moving forward as we look at future energy savings bits with them. At one point, we did talk about buses moving from Woodrow Wilson High School to a more central location. Is that going to happen? Because I still see buses at Wilson High School, and, you know, we've had some issues with some buses leaving the parking lot without our drivers in them. So are we moving them to a more secure location? What's the status of that? And that's my, one question. And my second question is, I see marching band uniforms on this list of future solicitations. Didn't we discuss marching band uniforms earlier?
Yep.
Like, there was a bit of money that was given for marching bands, like, May or June, and so where are we with that? Because I'm just confused. We talked about it here, and they're still, and they're still on the list for a future solicitation. So has it, have we not purchased them, and where do we stand with that? And I'm done.
Okay, we'll, we'll provide an update on all three of those items. And in particular, the Amoresco one, we've, we're already starting putting that information together because we're going to have to go out with a successor type of arrangement on energy.
Reverend Patullo?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate again after Mr. Parent came behind me, I know we don't have, maybe I don't have the funding for it, but if it's unsanitary at, at the schools, the lockers, then that should be a priority above anything else we're going to be doing to children's safety.
I agree.
And I've already had a couple of parents complaining about the locker rooms being unsanitary.
I agree.
Thank you.
Next item is 8.2, electronic vote. VRS Resolution, Employer-sponsored Hybrid 403 Plan. Mr. Steel?
Mr. Chairman, this particular item was discussed at the last school board meeting, and the, the school board was provided information on the background of this. Again, this is being initiated by a requirement from a 2015 legislative change, Senate Bill 1162 and House Bill 2178, where school divisions have the option to elect their employees to use an employer-sponsored hybrid 403 plan for the hybrid retirement plan voluntary contributions in place of the Virginia Retirement System Hybrid 457 deferred plan. The school board discussed these options on September 10th. We also provided information as a result of that discussion in your packet tonight, which a lot of those questions centered around the differences between 403 and 457. A document showing these comparisons, there's actually two different documents that are attached. At this time, the administration recommends the school board endorse utilizing the Virginia Retirement System Hybrid 457 plan for employees, and approve the resolution not to allow eligible employees to direct hybrid voluntary contributions to an employer-sponsored hybrid 403 retirement plan. Included is a resolution that was actually drafted by VRS attorneys, and they don't want us to change it. And so we have to indicate, the, the, the school board needs to indicate the approval of this resolution, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Steel. Board's pleasure?
Leave for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and proper to second that we adopt the resolution, or the VRS Hybrid 457 plan for employees, and approve the resolution not to allow eligible employees to direct hybrid volunteer contributions to an employer-sponsored hybrid 403 retirement plan. Make sure that's on the record. Okay. Board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 8.3, electronic vote, financial report, June 2015. Mr. Steel?
In your packet, actually, for the next three items, there's three months of financial reports. The first one is June, which closes out the previous fiscal year. And I can go through one at a time or together, but the first one I'll, I'll cover, again, this closes out June 2015. You can see that the revenue was slightly higher than the previous year, and the expenditure rate at the end of the year was higher than the year before. As you can see from the burn rate chart, which compares two previous fiscal years, we were falling slightly below in the months leading to the end of the fiscal year, but then we closed the gap fairly quickly. I will point out that we did close the print shop, and if you look on page 13 of 14 of the financial reports, you'll see that the print shop reflects a balance. That balance is changing a little bit, maybe with final reconciliation, but that's, that closing the print shop and the cash balance was presented as a revenue source, additional revenue source for our current year budget. So I'll just point that out. And that, that's, that's the June report. If you want, I can continue on with comments about the next one, or just-
Let, let me do one at a time.
Okay.
Okay. Board's pleasure on the June financial?
Leave for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and proper to second that we adopt the June 2015 financial reports. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition through electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Item 8.4, electronic vote, financial report, July 2015. Mr. Steel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this report, again, is for July. This is the first month of our fiscal year. As you know, on Tuesday, or you may know, the City Council passed an ordinance that gave us our second quarter appropriation. We are under quarterly appropriation, so it was key that they, they gave us the additional money starting in October. But I mentioned that, that we, we, we need to monitor quarterly an additional categorical funding. The other thing that, starting off the fiscal year, that we need to monitor, that I'll point out, is that our revenue is, from the state, is driven a lot by ADM and enrollment. So we're closely monitoring the new enrollment figures as we start the year, and we've gotten the first and second week readings, and we're, we're looking at that along with HR and curriculum instruction to see where the variances are at the different schools, so we can adjust accordingly. accordingly. In this report, again, it's just the start of the fiscal year, so there's not much that, I guess I can, I can point out. We'll get a clearer picture as we get the ADM and also as we get into the third and fourth months of the fiscal year. And that ends my comments on the July report.
Mr. Parent?
Mr. Steele, you had mentioned earlier that the city clerk is now requiring, or is it the city clerk, or is it the City Council, requiring that resolutions that we pass must be submitted in three weeks rather than two weeks? I mean, is that, is that, did the City Council, is that their, something that they did, or is it the city clerk is now requiring us, when we have to send a resolution up to City Council, that we have to, we have to have three weeks? Is that-
Permit, well, they've given us a timeline of the lead time they need to develop agenda items for City Council, and it's increased slightly from the previous year, so we're just adjusting accordingly.
But what changed? I mean, I don't understand, I don't understand what changed. We've been doing this for many years. What changed with them that this board is going to have to?
I'm not sure I can, I can address that.
Maybe we need to address that with City Council.
But we've been given the schedule, so we're planning accordingly.
So we have to plan, we have to make sure our resolutions arrive in time in order to put the appropriations-
Yeah, I guess from our side, the concern is, especially, again, when we get toward the end of the year-
Yeah.
-and we're looking at categories, and if we need to make adjustments-
Right.
-now we have to look at that even further in, ahead of time, to make sure we get, you know, the reappropriation request into the City Council on time.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, board's pleasure for July 2015?
Move for approval.
It's moved and properly seconded that we adopt the financial report for July 2015. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition to electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Number 8.5, electronic vote, financial report, August 2015. Mr. Steele?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is the August report, and again, there's three reports this month, but next month there'll be only one. Again, this is only the second month going into the, into the fiscal year, and if you look at the burn chart on page four, we're, you know, within the glide path of spending and also receiving revenue, so, again, we'll have a clearer picture as we get the ADM figures as it affects revenue, but also a clearer picture on expenditures in subsequent months.
Board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
It's moved and properly seconded that we adopt the financial report for August 2015. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition to electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Steele. Item 9.1, electronic vote, policies from VSBA. Okay, Dr. Bracy, you want to take this, or you have assignments on this one?
Yeah, I can take it. We have presented this information to you at the last work session that we had, and they were presented in the different tiers, and Ms. Hines came back and provided an update of the changes of the policies that were, the revisions that were requested at that time. So basically, what you see is the recommendations from the Policy Committee for approval.
Okay. Board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
It's moved and properly seconded that we adopt the VSBA policies as given. Any discussion? If not, board members, please indicate your disposition to electronic roll. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you. 9.2, monthly report, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, all yours.
Thank you, sir. I would like to just reiterate again that, and it's been stated by Dr. Taylor, Mr. Ziegler, that we got off to a great start, a great opening with the momentum that we had going into the school year. The schools are, the excitement is still in the schools. From the visits that I've had and that members of the senior staff have had, they've shared that the principals and teachers are still excited about the beginning of the school year, so we hope that this is something that's contagious and will carry us through the entire year. So we're very excited about the opening of the schools. I did want to mention that I did have a meeting with the editorial board of the Virginia Pilot on September 15. Thought that went well. They asked some very detailed questions. Our reporter, Sharice Newsom, was also present at that meeting with the editorial board. It almost felt like another interview for employment, but, you know, they asked some very detailed questions, and I think that, I think that, I think it was very good just for them to sit down to find out what my goals were for the division and where we were, so looking forward to a good relationship with them. And I want to thank Ms. Newsom for giving us a tour of the Pilot and walking us through the different departments. Our PIO, Ms. Doral, she was present with me during the, during the meeting. Also wanted to give an update on the delayed release for the state accreditation ratings. Usually, you know, around this time, we would have those, that information in, those reports, but there's been a delay, because the state is adjusting the way that they report out, and in addition to the fully accredited, and we now have, or accreditation denied, we now have four areas of partially accredited. So you have partially accredited approaching the benchmarks, which says schools are within a narrow margin of being accredited. You have partially accredited improving school, which means that a school is making sufficient progress as defined by the status of accreditation process. Then you have a warned school, which, where schools fall within a narrow margin, not, nor making significant progress toward full accreditation. And then, of course, partially accredited reconstituted school, schools which reconstituted plans by the Board of Education. So we're waiting, and should be, the date is October 27, when that should be approved, so we'll keep you updated as we get more information as it pertains to that. The security grant has already been discussed about where we were, so thank you, Mr. Parent, for bringing that up. That takes one, one additional that I had that I was going to share, but we're very pleased that we received almost the maximum amount for that, for those two high schools. And we will continue to try to make sure that the other schools are included, so that we can get all the needed upgrades done. Also want to reiterate something that the, one of our Wilson students, Talisa, mentioned that, of course, Woodrow Wilson and also Churchland High School were the two schools that were recognized by the U.S. News and Rural Report. Thought that was a tremendous honor for us to have two of our three high schools included on the list of best schools throughout the U.S. The principals at both schools are very elated about it, and the students and staff are very excited as well. Banners have been ordered, so they should be up soon, as well as plaques as well, because we want, we want to make sure that when you walk in, that you're in a, you're in a school that was recognized nationally. The last thing I wanted to share or remind the board that we will observe on September 30, the Staff Development Day, and October 12 will be a parent conference day, and both of those days will be early release scheduled. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Okay, item number 9.3 is board members' comments and concerns. Do I have any comments or concerns from board members? I do not see any cues, so, being that I don't, I have one thing to say. The member board training that we have coming up, the 29th, next Tuesday, at our Social Services Building, I think it starts at 10, but you all should have something from Kathy. She sent out a reminder notice, so please, we'll be looking forward to seeing you there next Tuesday. And if there's no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.